All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for May 6. Mayor Giles is out of town in excuse and all other members of the council are present. First item is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. Now, we went over on Thursday and we have, I think, two presentations or updates on two items that we discussed, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. We do, staff is prepared to come forward and speak on both Items 6A, the Craftsman on Elliott, to give an update on that, and then also on 7C, the cottages on Sossaman. So, thank you for that.
And we have Mr. Palmer up to the stage. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. So, a couple of quick updates on two cases that we talked about on Thursday. So, the first is Agenda Item 6A, which is ZON 23 00343. This is the Craftsman on Elliott. It's located on the northwest corner of Hawes Road and Elliott Road. So, this was before council, the study session on Thursday. Some of the feedback that we heard from council was that they might be able to do a little bit better integrating the open space. Look at what we can do there. We also heard this front drive aisle here, what can we do to break that up? So, we went back and worked with the applicant and they revised their plans in a number of ways. So, the first way, we'll start at the top of the plan north and kind of work our way south. The first change was we included a second pedestrian connection on the west side that connects the event lawn with the dog park to the north. The second change was to add a speed table. They actually added two speed tables. And for those who aren't familiar, that's similar to what's in front of the ASU building where we raised a section of the drive aisle. So, it is still a drive aisle, but it gives the impression that, you know, there are pedestrians present. That is not a standard drive aisle. So, they added speed tables between the dog park and the event lawn, and then also the event lawn and this area where the pool is. The third change we heard is the parking spaces, there were eight parking spaces directly north of the pool, that those might be better served to be landscaping. So, the applicant revised that to for landscaping. And the idea is that these changes really kind of continue to open space up north through the, through the project with those pedestrian connections to make it more readily accessible. The last change was that they added some stamped asphalt at that major, at the intersection off of Elliott Road, right in front of the clubhouse, to kind of differentiate that in addition to kind of the monumental landscaping with the palm trees and the enhanced landscaping right in front of the clubhouse. That stamped asphalt to kind of more clearly delineate that area and make it, make it a grander entry. So, those were the changes that the applicant turned around based on, on the feedback that we heard from council, but I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions? Scott, any further thoughts here?
I'll jump in. I'll jump in on your, on your project. Thank you to everyone for working so quickly to try to turn all this around. And just to back up a little bit, one of my concerns, first of all, this is the first mixed-use project in District 6. So, it's very important as an example of what mixed-use is and how to do it successfully and make a statement, and hopefully we see more opportunities. And then there are, I know, other areas of doing mixed-use. It's good to make it as a statement of what's possible in creating a place for community. So, I had referred back to, remember all my hours at Hawes Crossing, and I had referred back to the mixed-use design guidelines and standards that were created at the time of the approval of Hawes Crossing years ago, I think, 2019. And the one that really stood out for me that I was trying to accomplish, and I appreciate these additions, is pedestrian activity shall be encouraged in vertically mixed-use projects by locating urban plazas, patios, courtyards, water features, pedestrian seating, gathering areas, public art, sidewalks, path and walkways in the front and sides of buildings, as well as between parking areas and main entrances to non-residential uses. So, I appreciate these revisions on the north side. So, we have a continuous pathway to the lawn and the dog park and having the traffic slow down and creating more of that pedestrian pathway that can take all the way down to what's considered their main street and having the raised area there. Now, the added stamped asphalt on that main street on the south part, is there any room to do any kind of future feature in the middle of that, whether a landscape or some kind of art or some, you know, a lot of them do fountains, but we're in our water condition, we don't want to do fountains. Is there enough room in the drive aisle to have some kind of point of interest right there to have it be kind of the centerpiece to the entrance?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So, it's, I think it might be a little tough to get something in the actual drive aisle just given the geometry of the width of the drive aisle. Generally, when you see that, we flare that out a little bit so that we've got the room to do that. As this, as the project moves forward, we could talk to the applicant to see if there might be an opportunity to maybe put something near, nearer the clubhouse in the sidewalk to kind of give that, that focal feature, just not maybe in that actual drive aisle.
I think it would create a lot of drive-by appeal to there and also kind of be the anchor centerpiece for this pedestrian activity you're trying to create in front of the retail along that main street. There are also a couple of areas that I saw that are on the east and west side of that main entry that are supposed to have some mature trees and seating areas. Is that correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So, I'm not sure if you guys are seeing the mouse, but yes, there are planters along the front of the, this is a main street live-work unit in the southwest corner of the side in retail paths. So, yes, there are opportunities for benches, planters, those sorts of things to activate the, the areas in front of those buildings.
Is there, I would like to strongly suggest putting some kind of point of interest beyond a tree, a piece of art. There's a number of ways you can do that. You can do a bike rack that's artistic, whatever that is, points of interest on the west side and the east side in around the sitting areas to encourage people to walk that length as points of interest because the economic activity and building of community and the idea of mixed-use is getting people to circulate in the area. So, I strongly suggest having some kind of point of interest on the east side and the west side to create a reason to, you know, walk the area or see different areas. I'm not making a condition of approval, but I just want to strongly suggest that, which I guess if I really wanted, you have to have a condition of approval. But the idea, you know what, I understand the added expense and such, but the success of an area is created by these points of activation. The more, you know, walkability, the more people you have navigating, the more economic activity, and it makes it more of a place. So, I think it's well worth the investment to have something there to draw a person from one place to the other place. Yeah, because unless they want the retail or the service on the other end, there's no reason to go to the other side. Welcome comments from my councilmembers.
Councilmember, go forth.
So, on the, the live-work vertical buildings, how many live, different units are there in each of those buildings? Do you know offhand?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. I don't know off the top of my head. I feel like the answer is four, but I can.
Four?
I, I believe that is accurate, but let me find out.
So, four and then retail on the bottom?
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. So, I guess I'm wondering about the parking that's in between the pads that fronts Elliott Road. You know, Jen was talking about that, you know, that continuous line, and we've talked about this before, Evan, about, you know. Can we, can we tighten up and make, and I understand you have to have parking, but can we tighten up and make some more of that space productive as opposed to the sitting parking lot? Can, can they not walk from the back of the site to the front of the site? They have to have the parking right there on the front of Elliott?
That is a good question. So, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. First, there are 18.
18 in each building.
Just, just a little off, yes. 18 live-work units. The parking is kind of situated there purposefully, I would say. So, we, we worked with the applicant quite a bit to get as much of the parking behind the buildings as possible. So, that's why you see on the north side of the site, we've got all of that parking. We really tried to minimize the, as much parking as, as possible. It is covered parking, so there is, is a residential component to those, those live-work units, so.
So, that, those front lots are for the, that was my next question. Where are those people that live there? Is that where they're parking right there?
That's, that's the intention, correct.
Okay, that, that, I understand.
Would podium parking be an option there? It seems like a waste of land just to have it for parking on, on the frontage.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So, I mean, staff is, is always supportive of podium parking. You know, the developer also has to consider, you know, to ma- make sure that it's, it's a viable project and that we can accomplish what, what they're showing. So, the, they did come a long way with the vertical mixed-use buildings, moving the parking to the rear of the site. And I, I think that's kind of where staff landed on this one, is, is they've come a long way. We minimized as much parking as possible off of Elliott, and you can see that the areas where there is parking, there's also enhanced landscaping in front of those areas on Elliott to kind of try to visually mitigate the impact of, of that parking.
Hopefully, the project will be very successful and eventually they'll build over that parking because it just seems like a waste of land along a major arterial to have it be just parking.
Yeah, and we've all been to those kind of developments, right, where you have activation on both sides of the street. You might have on-street parking, but you're not walking in front of storefronts and then a major parking, a wide parking lot and then another store. You know, it's, it's that continuous activation of the street with store, storefronts or living, and, and that's where we would like to get to. They exist in other parts of the valley. So, the fact that we continue to need a park, a large parking lot on a frontage road in between buildings, which is an unproductive use of space in Mesa, I'm not exactly sure why, because other municipalities are doing it differently.
Mr. Summers, Councilmember Summers?
Well, I'm going to, first of all, commend staff because up until now, as was mentioned earlier, this, this is the first attempt at a vertical integration mixed-use development, which every developer has been telling me since I took office, the first time that this is impossible in southeast Mesa. Is this, this is not a perfect plan, but this, it's certainly an iterative process where we've gone from essentially nothing but garden apartments to something that finally has some integration in it. And to have the retail integrated in there is, is hugely important for what comes next. And what comes next are other projects, and I mentioned it at the last study session where East Market is a huge deal. Was always envisioned to be more of an urban core and walkable. And I was, one of my fellow councilmembers, I was just sharing a map, an overview of what that looked like. And for that project, which isn't here yet, it's not the one before us, but you have a park in front of it, you have a skate park, you have the linear park that leads to the great park that leads to all the residential homes. To have that, that truly high-density live-work-play environment where the retail is underneath, to take those two streets, if you can envision it, if you can see it in your head, and be able to block the street off and have festivals, Fourth of July, Christmas time, food, food trucks, markets, all types of events, that is the ultimate goal in this district, is to see a development like that. But until we can prove that concept, that vertical integrative mixed-use is possible, I can't, I can't get them to budge. So, to see this project and know where it started from, which looked very much like the typical apartment complex that had parking in the front and nice little sign and, and a couple of little drive-throughs or whatever the, the retail was, to see how this has moved in this direction is a vast improvement and I think can show proof of, proof of concept. This has been an absolutely fantastic conversation both today and on Thursday about how we build better and how we create communities, a sense of place in this. This is a start, not perfect, but it's, it's a start. And I think when we, as we move forward and we look at some of our other areas that were designed for that, now we can say, this is possible because it was done over here. So, now we've done that, what's the next step?
It seems so, Scott. We're trying to combine two concepts that, so you're trying to activate and make it walkable by putting that vertical live-work, and yet you still have a large parking lot. That doesn't act, nobody wants to walk in front of a, a large parking lot. You're not going to get that street activation when you could still have parking lots in between your buildings. So, it's like we're trying to combine two concepts. Either it's that urban activation or you do your conventional.
But this isn't quite urban, right? This, this is.
For sure.
And I get it, and I get it, I get, I do. But to the side of this, like we talked about the other day, it, it's an industrial building. It's an Amazon building, right? So, this, this isn't the urban area. What, what I'm trying to express is that there are urban areas in this district, truly urban areas where it should be completely mixed-use, walkable space for this area and what could have been, what is, the, the type of product we put together. This is a vast improvement over what we have seen in the past, and I think leads to discussions for what should be better in other areas that, that are truly designed to be that kind of walkable environment and are undershooting that target significantly.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Evan. In our prior discussion, we talked about electric vehicle hookups and possible solar connections on, on the carports areas. Was there any discussion on that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. So, the, they are not adding EV at, at the moment, but the city has kind of streamlined the process for if, if they see a demand in, in EV charging to come back and, and add that. It actually just goes right through permitting. So, it's not on the site plan now, but there are avenues to, to make that change and it's, it's relatively painless from a permitting perspective.
Okay, and what about the solar?
The same would, would apply there. So, they are showing parking canopies on the site. They've got, actually got quite a number of parking canopies on the north side of the site. Those could be converted to solar.
Well, you know, and I'm hearing the conversation from my colleagues about some of the integration and plans here, but I think from staff, you're hearing what we're wanting you to hear and relating that to the developer. And then, you know, then I look at the Design Review Board, you know, they didn't chew any of this up that I know of, and so we're doing that. I think some of the heavy lifting needs to be as part of the Design Review Board and you as staff to kind of, kind of know where we want to champion and have these mixed-use developments stand out in our community because it will, and, and so I'll just leave it at that, okay? Thanks.
Understood, thank you.
Hey, Evan, on the question on the EV charging station, I know they're not adding here, but is there a different power requirement that we might look into to be EV-ready perhaps or leading with that conversation with developers and ensuring that there's enough power, sufficient power for these EV stations that can be built in the future? Maybe not particularly at the beginning or when they develop this, but maybe two years, three years from now as, as they see maybe a, a need from residents there.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Heredia. So, I'm definitely not the expert on, on the power requirements for, for EV charging, but there is generally a little bit of infrastructure that goes along with those, and there's some pedestals and they can charge however many number of cars in a row that is. So, I, I don't know that it's something that you have to plan for upfront, but when you're ready to do that, there is some equipment that accompanies that. So, they're easily able to be retrofitted into, into parking. And again, I'm not the expert, but I don't believe there's any specific power requirements that you have to consider from the entitlement standpoint to, to make that work.
Okay, all right. Julie?
Just for fun, I'll bring up the issue that, so we, we talked a little bit on Thursday about kind of that we didn't like how there was this substantial parking lot, but also this, this project is two, three, 232 spots underparked or whatever. So, did we look at that really closely just to make sure we were not underparking this since it is in District 6?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury. So, the applicant did a parking study, and what they based it on were other developments of, of similar scope in the area. They also looked at the number of bedrooms, one-bedroom studios, and I think this is almost, it's over 50% studios and one-bedrooms.
Oh, perfect.
So, when they did that analysis and they also look at all the transportation standards, that analysis came back with that there is, is sufficient parking on the site to accommodate the number of units that they're proposing and also the resident, or, excuse me, the commercial development.
Okay, great, thanks. I just want to make sure we looked at that.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to make, real quick, it's not, clearly you have to have parking here. People are going to drive. It's about where you put it.
Sure.
That, that's the point, I think, that I was trying to make.
I know, ideally, I think we'd do a garage. I hate my button. Um, yeah, like, like a garage or underground or something, but it's just so much more expensive. So, I understand why developers don't want to do that, but, I mean, we'd all love it to be more hidden so that we could use that space for something more productive, but, I mean, if we have to have it, I just want to make sure we have enough too, so, thanks.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Do we want to proceed for approval?
Uh, sure.
Proceed for approval. Do we want to leave it on the consent?
Leave it on the consent agenda?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine? Okay, we'll just leave it on the consent agenda and go from there. Yeah, I think we can vote here, but. Can we leave it on the consent agenda or does other councilmembers have a?
Do you want continuation?
Continuation.
Where's Scott on this?
Consent is fine with me.
Okay, we'll leave it on consent and go from there then. All right, moving on to the other item was 7C? Right, okay.
Item 7C, yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. So, this is ZON 21 00874. This is the cottages on Sossaman. So, this is north of Main Street on the east side of Sossaman. The, this was also discussed Thursday at a study session, and some of the feedback that we got was general, two, two things, I would say. So, one is the location of the pickleball courts that was previously approved. The second is the number of, of available guest parking spaces. So, staff worked with the applicant on those, those two requests. So, the first one, the pickleball court was centrally located, when you guys saw it last week, kind of just north of the central amenity area between what is Unit 6 and 7. The applicant shifted that as far to the west side of the site as possible. For context, there's commercial development on the, the west side of the site. So, the pickleball court is now directly adjacent to the commercial. They increased the space between the pickleball court and this unit, which does result in a 10-foot setback. So, in the staff report that council was given, it called out a 24-foot setback on the west. That is now a 10-foot setback on the west. The second item that we worked with the applicant on was parking. So, when this went to the Planning and Zoning Board, we had a total, let's see, we added six spaces since this went to the Planning and Zoning Board. There were three additional spaces shown when this was at council, when it was discussed on Thursday. The applicant went back to, took another look at the site plan, and we added two additional parking spaces, parallel parking spaces in front of the pickleball court, which again was relocated to the northwest corner of the site. They also added an additional parking stall just on the east side of the solid waste enclosure. So, since Thursday, they picked up three additional stalls for a total of 12 uncovered guest parking spaces located on the south side of the pool, one behind the solid waste enclosure. We've got three on the west end of the site and the, and the two parallel parking spaces in front of the pickleball court. Those are the changes that the applicant made, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that council might have.
Councilmember Spillsbury?
Okay, so since Thursday, we've gone through a lot of discussion, and I, I want to give kudos to the developer and tried to squeeze in any parking they possibly could onto the site and moving the pickleball court to the corner, which I liked a lot better. I, I am just still not exactly sure how I feel about what the right number of parking is for these types of developments. Again, like I mentioned on Thursday, the carport model is different than the garage model, and with the carport model, they can use their driveway for a guest or a visitor, which does make it different than if a garage, you have, you're not going to have a plumber park in your garage. So, with the six added spaces for a total of 12 extra spaces, I, I think I'm going to be comfortable going forward with this, but I've been talking a lot to staff, and I think moving forward, we really need to look at this particular product when we're looking at parking standards and make sure that we're not, we're not underparking these so that they don't cause problems down the road for our neighborhoods.
Do we continue?
No, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue it. I'm going to, I'm going to vote to leave it on consent. I, I really do appreciate the developers. Again, I'm, I'm looking for a magic number, and I'm not sure I'm going to get the magic number because there's so many different variables. This gives about a third of the spaces, you know, there's 37 units, so there's 12 extra parking spots, guest parking. I don't know if that's enough. Like, I don't, I don't know how to figure out if that's enough. It doesn't quite seem like enough to me, like in reality, but when everyone can use the driveways, maybe it will be enough. So, I've, I've really struggled with this one, as you can tell. So, there's, there's not a whole lot more they can do for this, this lot.
So, you can park two cars, one under the carport.
Carport. So, every single unit has two spaces.
And can you park on the street?
No street parking.
You cannot park on the street?
There is no street parking.
Okay, they're just, it's just too narrow?
Correct.
How wide is it?
24 feet.
24 feet, yes, Councilmember, go forth, 24 feet.
And, and what we say you need for the fire, it's because of the fire, drive, fire parking? I mean, why can't you park on a 24-foot street?
So, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. The minimum space that you need for fires is 20 feet. A parallel parking stall is nine feet in depth. So, when you start adding that up, kind of the minimum that you would need to have on-street parking on one side of the street is about 29, 29 feet. 24 feet is the minimum width for a two-way drive aisle, so it's the same that you would see in, you know, in a shopping center. It's 24 feet for two-way traffic, but that doesn't support parking on-street in addition to that.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts.
Any other questions, comments? And we're okay, I'm putting, leaving it on consent agenda? Julie, consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, all right? All right, any other agenda items, Mr. Bowler?
Vice Mayor, no, that was the only presentations that staff had prepared, but of course, we're here to answer any other questions on any of the items that council may have.
Any other questions on the agenda that we missed? Mr. Summers?
I just, I saw Ralph Yu back here, and I wonder if I could have him come up and talk to 6B just very so slightly. just very so slightly?
He should have warned you.
I should have warned you, Ralph, but I saw you. To be clear, so this is the, this is the Gallery Park Freeway Landmark sign, correct?
Correct.
And that's, this is not a billboard?
This is not a billboard.
Okay, how so? As you understand it?
Correct.
Okay, so what's the difference between a billboard and this particular sign?
Well, that's a really good question, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Summers especially. The difference is, a monument sign is intended to focus on the destination of the project and its tenants. Billboards often advertise off-site locations and products that are unrelated to the billboard itself. So, and, and the city has its own freeway monument sign ordinance. So they're, they're, they're two different categories.
When was the last time this council reviewed the, the monument sign ordinance?
The monument sign ordinance, I think, has been around for every bit of 15 years, maybe more.
And was there, what was the problem with, why is this before us? I mean, is it the difference between, so advertising the project versus advertising tenants, right?
Yeah.
Is part of that project? So this is going to advertise the tenants in there more?
Right. I mean, that's the goal.
And that's the, kind of the gist of why we're hearing this and what the, the variance.
And there's a requirement to hear it.
Correct. Vice, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. So it is a requirement, a, a freeway landmark sign is a little different than a sign plan in that it requires a council use permit because the idea is, is it's important for council to take a closer look at these. So we have those freeway landmark guidelines, which as, as Mr. Pugh noted, are, are a little bit older. And so some of those standards might be a bit outdated. So that's why you saw the number of deviations that you did. But it's important to note that there would be no off-site advertising with the sign.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I just wanted to make sure we're, and then we heard during our Thursday meeting, there was a discussion about how old that landmark sign is, why there were so many deviations from the original standard. So it does sound like we probably need to hear this, making some changes, given the changes in technology and landmark signs and that kind of thing in the future, that we should probably change that standard some. So.
It'd be a good idea, Councilmember, to review that ordinance when the staff, staff's busy these days, so.
They are, and I think the last time we talked about this was probably when we were looking at freeway landmark signs for Fiesta and, and Superstition, which is 15 years ago.
Right.
Okay. I have no problem with this. It can stay on the agenda for approval, but I just wanted to hear it from you that this is, unlike what has been reported in the paper, this is not a, it is not a billboard and a lot of the variance has to do with the fact that we have a pretty old standard that probably needs some moving.
It's a very good way to say it, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. We'll move on to the second item is a list of current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you want to share? Nobody? Councilmember, go forth?
Yeah, I would just like to say that tomorrow I'm having a coffee with Councilmember at Hava Java at Power Road and McDowell. So if anybody would like to come down and talk as well, I'll be there as well as Commander Rash and some of the other Mesa police officers. So we would love for you to come down and talk to us, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
All right. Councilmember Duff? Yeah, I'll mention it.
Vice Mayor Heredia mentioned our Guerrero Elementary wattle, water bottle giveaway. But anyway, on that same day last Thursday, I attended a Fruitlandia and Taqueria grand opening. Well, they've been open for a while, but we, they did their formal ribbon cutting last Thursday. This is on Country Club and University. And they have some yummy tacos and drinks and I highly recommend to drop in and, and check it out. We're glad to add to that intersection to have a vibrant place to be. Friday, I attended the Sark's Annual Community Breakfast around autism. That was very powerful. And Friday night, I attended the Mesa Leadership Graduation. Councilmember, I think it just Freeman was there, right? Yeah. I'm trying to remember.
I'm sorry.
Mesa Leader, yeah, correct. Mesa Leadership Course, Leadership and Training and Development is part of the Mesa Chamber. It's a leadership course. And many of our, some of our Mesa employees are part of that and I congratulate them, Lisa, and some others that I'm probably remembering their names. So let me do that. And I think that's about it. I didn't prepare in advance, so I apologize for being kind of cut up. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Spilsbury, nothing? All right, perfect. Well, for Councilmember Duff mentioned, we, we were at Guerrero Elementary, thanks to the Water, Water Resources Department, who worked with Mesa Public Schools in getting the first hydration station at Guerrero High, Guerrero Elementary. So we passed out some water bottles and, and I think another school, Jefferson, also was part of the list. And there's a third school, I think, that also had water stations there that we helped through Gila River Tribe Grant. So thanks to our partners, to the Gila River Tribe for their partnership in, in this work. So, and then also just want to highlight, this Friday, we have the Spring Blast in Rose, at Rose Junior High. This is an annual event I have at Rose Junior High. So from 5:00 to 7:00, free swim and flow rider and entertainment and food for, for everybody to come on by and stop for a free swim opening there. So.
Do you get on the flow rider?
I don't, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be nice. So it's, but.
Would you let us go and do, and we can post it in the public meeting?
Vice Mayor Heredia, I just wanted to jump in. Oh, sorry.
Are you going to do the flow rider too?
No. No.
I thought you were going to talk about the Historic Preservation Day Saturday.
Thank you. Please do.
So the mayor did a proclamation on Historic Preservation Month, so we appreciated all those who came and also the great drawings from all the different school kids and the presentations that were made. It was a nice time. So Councilmember Duff, the mayor and myself were there. I think so.
And I think we're going to do a recognition of the proclamation at our council meeting in just a few minutes. And so we'll be able to, I'll expand a little bit more on some things that happened there. But it was a very, very good event, a good turnout and quite exciting. I also wanted to mention on Saturday, I had an opportunity to listen into a roundtable with the Mayor of Coppa County and the mayor and with Secretary of the Treasury Janet Yellen. That was in Mesa on Saturday afternoon. She was in, Janet also went to MCC and I think some other things, places in the state. So that was a great opportunity to talk about what we're doing for workforce development to meet the, the jobs that we have by the, the CHIPS Act and so many other, around healthcare and IT and things like that, the growth that we have in those industries and what we're doing to prepare apprenticeships and education to fill those work, those jobs. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you. If nothing else, Mr. Butler, can you share the schedule of future meetings?
Vice Mayor, Council, you've been busy and no rest for the weary. Several of you tomorrow at 11:00 AM will be participating in that Mesa Hydration Campaign kickoff at the United Food Bank. So that's right in line with some of the discussion council's been having. Wednesday at 6:00 PM is our annual Police Department Fallen Officer Memorial at Police Headquarters at, at 6 o'clock on Wednesday. And then on Friday, after you've had your fill of watching the Vice Mayor on the flow rider, it's also a reminder that the IDEA Museum is having its Free Admissions Evening that night from 5:00 to 9:00. It says 5:00 to 9:00 AM, but I don't think they party all night at the IDEA Museum. But 5:00 to 9:00 PM Friday night for free admission. And with that, we'll see you back here on Thursday morning. We will open with a Housing Governing Board meeting and then study session following that. So, thank you.
All right, perfect.
Vice Mayor, I'm going to insert myself just one more time. I made a mistake. We are not doing a recognition of the Historic Preservation Month at our council meeting. So I just wanted to make a few comments about that to expand on it. So as Councilmember Freeman had mentioned, that on Saturday, we had a Historic Preservation Celebration at the studios. And to recognize, this is Historic Preservation Month, and in recognition of that, we, there was a contest that we put out there. The Historic Preservation Board put out an essay and art contest to Mesa students K through 12 about history topics. There were a tremendous turnout. There was 37 contestants showing all kinds of beautiful art and then the essays. And those awards were made. The mayor at that event didn't make, proclaimed May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month. And there was a tour to see the historic signs and a walking tour of downtown. I'm sure the Historic Preservation Office will list all the winners and feature their art. There's a long list. I won't go into that now. But I wanted to thank staff, all the Historic Preservation Board members and the schools for participating in this. I think it's the best year we've had in recognizing our Historic Preservation Month. And thank you to all. And I look forward to sharing that on social as well as we'll have it, I'm sure, posted on our page and Historic Preservation on the website. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Duff.
I'm so moved.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Freeman second, Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. See you upstairs.